Today is Wednesday, June 17. This is a special meeting of the Rhinebeck Education, Rhinebeck Central School District Education. And I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 10, 2020 regular meeting. Any revisions? All those in favor?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay, everyone's in favor. Okay, we have an opportunity for public comment. Are any member of the public would like to comment?
No comment.
Okay, we're going to move on to reports and discussion. Policy?
Okay, policy. So we, responsible use policy, 4526.1. We continue the discussion regarding which students will have access to our laptop program. The discussion revolved around BOSI's, Bard, Bridge, private school, and homeschool students. The laptops are for our teachers to provide their students with instruction. So if students are not directly interacting with our teachers, should they also receive laptops? Should we limit the devices to students who are actively enrolled in the Rhinebeck School District? Should we specifically list approved programs such as BOSI's, Bard, and Bridge? And should we require those students to provide a demonstrated need for laptops? Joe will talk with Emily Davidson about her program needs, and he will also talk with legal counsel. We also discussed how to manage damaged and/or lost computers. Steve Jensen consulted with the Pine Plain School District, who have such a policy in place, and using their policy as a guideline, we discussed first, the need for tracking system to document damage stolen computers per student. Upon each incident, a letter goes out to the parent guardians acknowledging damaged stolen device. We need to make sure that parents' guardians are aware of the history of damage. The fourth incident, the student-parent guardians will be held responsible for replacing device with an equivalent device, meaning if the computer is five years old, we are not asking them to replace with a brand-new device. The other aspect was it will be the responsibility of the student-parent guardians to provide documentation within seven days, such as a police report, if the device is stolen or damaged due to fire. We also discussed the data privacy security policy. The state has pushed the deadline for that policy to October, lessening the urgency to have this policy in place by July. Our district has a boilerplate policy already written, and we are awaiting more direction from the state for requirements. We are adding language regarding acceptable use, making clear that when Zoom, Google for meetings at home, the district expects the same behavior as if you were hosting the meeting in school. Respectfully submitted, Liz Rom. Next meeting to be determined.
Any questions for policy?
Well, I have a question following up on the matter of who would get computers? Whether BOSI students, for example, would get computers, or students at Duchess, or Bard? And so I'm curious, I read and heard Liz say that Joe was going to talk to Emily about that. Joe, was there further?
I'm meeting with Emily tomorrow to have that discussion.
Okay. Okay.
I think the issue is essentially, should students who are not going to be required, or who will not need the laptops to engage in instruction, be given laptops? So in terms of special education, I'm going to ask Emily, do those students need laptops to, say, be engaged in remote learning? If they do, then I would say they should get laptops. The question came up, for example, and I'm just using this as an example. A student who's, it's not a bad example, because a student who's going to the tech center at BOSI's would be in our school for half of the day, so they'd have to use the computers for that half of the day. But let's just say, just for argument's sake, we had a student going to BOSI's for a full-day automotive mechanics program, and that student's teacher at BOSI's doesn't have their students use a computer, or doesn't do remote learning for their students, should we be giving that student a laptop? You could apply the same thing to kids who are going to Duchess as part of a bridge program, or who are engaged in the Bard program. Do they need a laptop to do their work? And if they do, they certainly should get a district-supplied laptop. If they don't, that's the question we were discussing. Should we just give every student a laptop regardless of whether they need the laptop to engage in instruction or not? That's the question we were kicking around.
So it's not necessarily a question of whether they needed to engage with our Rhinebeck district teachers? So for example, if there was a student who was full-time Bridge at Duchess, and they would need a computer to complete their work there, but they're not part of, they're not also taking classes in Rhinebeck, would they get a computer or no?
That's the discussion.
Okay.
We haven't made a final decision, or we haven't finished the policy yet. That's one of the things that we were discussing. Exactly that question that you brought up is what we're trying to navigate right now. Would you agree, Liz?
Yeah.
Right? Do I have it right, Liz?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I voiced my opinion in the policy committee, and I'll share it with all of you. You know, I also feel that, you know, it's sort of, you know, computers and laptops and access to the internet now is an educational tool, and I feel like if somebody is full-time at BOSI's doing welding or auto mechanics, they can enhance their experience and broaden their horizons if they have the tool of the laptop and the internet to explore more options, or, you know, just to explore the subject itself. So I, you know, so I'm a big advocate that, you know, if you, for the kids, you know, regardless whether they're Bard, BOSI's, in the Rhinebeck High School, to get laptops. I do understand the idea that, you know, the private school or the homeschool kids, and I understand those limitations, but, you know, I feel that everybody should get a fair shot.
Well, I think the point that Liz just made, depending how we go at this policy and ultimately bring a recommendation to the board, raises some of these other questions. For example, should a student who's a Rhinebeck student, you know, you can make the argument that, well, if they're taxpayers, their kids should get a laptop. Okay? I mean, that's an opinion, and I'll just leave it at that. But a student who goes to a private or parochial school, or a student who's homeschooled, their parents are taxpayers too, should we be giving a laptop to basically every kid in grades six through 12 regardless of where they go to school? And that, it's just, it's a little more complicated than giving them to the kids who attend Rhinebeck schools where they will be required to access instruction, whether we're doing remote learning, or whether we're back in the classroom in September or at some point this year. But it's the other permutations of this that have raised the question. And like I said, we have not, we have not come to an agreement as a, as a policy committee yet, much less brought it to the full board for your review and input. So stay tuned.
Steve, I think you had a question?
Sorry, I just wanted to ask, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I just wanted to follow up on that, Joe, and then I have another question. What's mechanics for the end of the year with these laptops? Are kids going to keep them, six through 12? And if they are, do we envision taking one away in 11th grade if they're going to go to BOSI's?
No, we are collecting them back so they can be checked out and made in good, yeah, to be in good shape for the fall. So Steve Jensen has been in the process for, ever since we ended remote instruction this past Friday, the 12th of June, he's already engaged in a process of collecting them back from parents so they can go through them and make sure they're ready to go in the fall.
Is there a policy for kids that want to opt out?
Opt out of what?
Taking a laptop.
Oh, out of taking a school laptop?
Yes.
Is that what you're asking? Okay. We did, we did talk, I thought, Liz, and correct me if I'm wrong, we did, that did come up in our discussion, I thought, in terms of, you know, like the bring-your-own-device program, where if a kid has his or her own device at home that mom and dad will let the student bring to school, because the bottom line of the one-to-one is that they need that laptop in school every day. Again, we're assuming a more traditional face-to-face mode of instruction. So they need to come to school every day with their laptop and have it in every class because their teachers are going to be expecting them to be using it. Could another, you know, a home-bought-owned device serve that purpose just as well as a district laptop? I suppose so in theory, but I don't think we wrote language into that policy yet to address that specific question. So I mean, it's certainly a question that needs to be addressed, Steve. Recently, also to go along with this, I think we have to make a distinction between those registered with the school district and those that are not. When this began, we did get a request from a private school parent requesting equipment to be, you know, loaned to a student for private school remote learning. It got resolved in the end, but we had a discussion, can't remember if it was David or Margot, and basically what it comes down to is the following, when it comes to those who are not, when they're registered with the school district, you have to treat them equally. But when it goes outside of that to private homeschooled who aren't registered with the school district, what we have to provide for them is a share of our computer hardware aid. So we would take our computer hardware aid divided by the number of kids, and that's how much that student would get from the school district to purchase that thing through, I don't know, through our, what mechanism that purchase would happen, but we get $264, divide that by over 1,000 kids, you know, every kid gets 25 cents for a computer. So if we start doing it, we have to do it for all. And David said we are not obligated, but once we start doing it, then we would then become obligated.
So I mean, pretty much where we left off, we just want to make sure we capture all the possible scenarios of kids that, you know, might fall through the cracks. We just want to make sure every kid that should have a laptop gets one, and that we're not giving out laptops to kids that are not taking necessarily.
And we also got the answer for students who are attending out-of-district special ed programs at, like the Anderson School, Aster and those. Those schools need to provide the devices, not the school district, because we are paying for that program. They're responsible to provide the equipment necessary for that education. The irony of what Tom mentioned a couple of minutes ago with the student who was attending a private school and wanted us to provide technology, that was resolved very simply. We called the private school and said, hey, one of your parents is asking us to loan them technology. Do you guys have technology that you could loan them? Oh, of course we do. All they had to do was ask us. So we said, ask your school, they've got technology for you, feel free. So people have different motivations for asking us to provide stuff. Sometimes they want to travel to where the private school is to go pick up the technology. The school was more than willing to make the technology available to that student. So it was more a matter of convenience than a matter of availability of the technology. Anyway. So the bottom line is, we're still working on, you know, ironing out some of the kinks. We're giving you an update on that, and obviously sometime, hopefully in July, before we have to, before we are going to be implementing a one-to-one this fall, we'll have the policy nailed down and, you know, to the board, and the board will have done two readings, and that will be the law of the land. Right now, it's still, it's still not fully cooked yet.
And I think this is a policy that's going to need to be updated frequently as we kind of go through this process and see what works and what doesn't work.
Yes, you're absolutely right. That's where we are in that policy.
Any questions for policy? I think we have curriculum?
Yep. Thanks, Diane. The curriculum committee met yesterday. Pretty much the sole agenda item was the discussion of the summer curriculum process and the review of the list recommended projects. Marvin led us through that discussion. He noted that much of the planning around the summer curriculum program was conducted prior to the closure of schools on March 13. He noted that the initial ask around summer curriculum was about 249,000, which was ultimately reduced to about $180,000. Of that amount, about $70,000 relates to the one-to-one community computing initiative and the related professional development. In terms of the budget for this summer curriculum, the funds are heavily weighted towards implementing Canvas as the learning management system across the district. And then Marvin talked about the various professional development efforts underway in connection with implementing Canvas. He noted the use of instructional videos application, and the fact that certain teachers who are familiar with the application are serving as mentors for other teachers who are less familiar with it. He also talked about the various learning tools being utilized that would be in place, hopefully by the fall, tools such as Quizlet. He also noted that while certain teachers were on a pretty steep learning curve back in March, due to the training that's been underway, everyone is in a much better place than they were back before the closure of schools. Terms of the surveying regarding remote learning, the surveying has been completed with respective teachers, and those results are going to be discussed later in the week with the administrators. Also discussion of how teachers are able to work remotely in terms of planning their summer curriculum. Apparently, that process was implemented a couple of years ago, so no one really missed a beat this summer. It's working pretty effectively. And then I guess the last topic here was just an update on the earth science mastery tests. Those were completed at home due to safety concerns, and that was the final meeting of the curriculum committee this year. So unless Jacqueline or Joe have anything to add, that covers it.
That was a pretty good summary of our 45-minute or so.
Yeah, it was kind of a one, again, a one-topic meeting, but if anyone has any questions, happy to try to answer them.
Matt, so I thought a lot of the Canvas work got done over these past three months. Is that, did that not, a lot of it not get done, or is this like additional training? It seems, I'm not sure what work is going to be done over the summer that's on this list.
Well, the primary use of Canvas during the last three months of the school closures was with the teachers in the middle school who have had, who have been using Canvas for a number of years. Some teachers took it on to basically learn Canvas themselves during the closure, but certainly not the, not the critical mass of teachers that we want to be able to transition to Canvas. So they're going to need some training, and they're going to need time to input and to develop their course contents, and put them into Canvas, and learn how to manage that course content into Canvas. So primarily, it's been used at the middle school, and as I believe you're all aware, we're in the process of pushing that up into the high school. So a lot of those, not all of them, but a lot of them are high-school-level training and time to input their curriculum items into Canvas. So there's people at all levels of Canvas use, and the ones who need it are primarily located in the high school.
Okay, so is this, you might have just answered it, but I'm going to ask anyway. Was this, so this is primary for them to upload the information into it, to input the information, or is it that and training, or some kind of combination?
It's a combination. It's a combination.
Yeah, my understanding is they're currently working on uploading their various curriculum, you know, to the application.
If you remember a presentation that we had, that the board had, from Steve Jensen, might have actually been in the fall, he explained to us that Canvas is a very time- and labor-intensive process to get your stuff loaded in there. Once it's loaded in there, then you're just updating it, tweaking it, adding to it, but to get everything uploaded into Canvas in a way that you can use it to deliver instruction is very time-intensive. So if we want teachers to do this, we have to provide them with the time to, A, learn how to do it, and then, B, to actually do it. So that's what's going to, a lot of what's going to be done during the summer, and as Marvin explained to us when we met yesterday, the process for developing summer curriculum work proposals has, for many years, been one where we, we give the teachers parameters for what we want to see in the proposals. And in this case, they were told, if you want to write a summer curriculum proposal, you need to write it so that it supports the use of Canvas's learning management system, which is why so many of them are technology-driven and Canvas-based. Because we told them, that's what we wanted to see in these projects. So they write a proposal, they submit it to Marvin, Marvin and the building principals review the proposals, make sure they meet our criteria, and if they do, then there's a process of reviewing the number of hours they request, and et cetera, et cetera. I mean, it's more complicated than I'm explaining it, but ultimately, Marvin and I sit down to review the proposals, which we did this past Friday, this past Friday, the 12th, and then we target things that have to get changed, and one of the, I think Matt mentioned that the original proposals were up around $240,000. So when you have a budget of $180,000, and you get proposals that are going to cost you $240,000, then you go, we go through a process to modify those proposals specifically in terms of the number of hours that we're going to fund, and get back to the teachers, and let them know, yeah, you requested 100 hours, we're going to recommend 60 hours. Are you still in, or no? Do you want us to withdraw your proposal? And almost, almost to a person, they're willing to do their project based on what we approve for them, and what we're recommending to you to approve tonight is that modified, whittled-down series of proposals that are largely, if not exclusively, technology-based and Canvas-based.
And one thing I think I didn't mention in my summary was that, I think Joe or Marvin mentioned that the teachers were kind of asked to frame their requests, keeping in mind the current environment we're all operating in. By and large, they all, they all kind of stuck to that. So really, the kind of the revisions were just tweaks around the edges and clarification of that sort.
That's right.
Two additional questions. So I mean, many, many, several teachers have already done this work on their own over this course of this past year. Is the expectation then that everyone is going to be ready to go with Canvas, six through 12, in the fall?
I would say the people in the high school and those in the middle school who maybe were not heavy users of Canvas prior to this year will be better able to use Canvas. This isn't something that's going to happen in one, in one summer, in 40 hours over a single summer. But I think half the battle, based on our experience with the middle school over the last several years, half the battle, or more than half the battle, is getting them to start to use it, start to input their material, and then at that point, they tend to be more comfortable with the platform, and they can incrementally add other things to the platform as they go along. Obviously, the more they use the platform, the better able they're going to be to use it and to modify it. But to say that everybody is going to be 100% ready to jump off the block on September 1st, that would be overstating. They won't all be able to be at the same level of proficiency by the start of school in September, but they will be much more able than they may have been three months ago, or than they even may be right now.
Sure, I mean, that makes sense. People are going to be at different abilities, but as long as there's a baseline for what everybody's, everybody's at a certain point, they'll be able to use it. Is that your understanding?
Yes, there will be, there will be a baseline for everybody who's been trained and goes through this process, yes.
Okay, and then my other question, I didn't get to check, is this, because the dollar amount seemed a little bit higher than usual. Is it, are we within our budget for that? I didn't.
Yeah, as Matt explained in his minutes, it's a combination of general fund monies and some state and federal grant monies. So it's, it's certainly within our budget, and it's not, it's not much different than our summer curriculum projects every year.
Yeah, I think the minutes have more details there. I think Title II, there's $26,000 through that plan, but, you know, there's more details in them.
And we have always done that. We have always used a combination of general fund monies and grant monies to support these summer curriculum projects.
Okay, any other questions for curriculum? All right, that's all the reports, right?
That's it.
Okay, we're going to move to our action items, but I just wanted to say, before we move to our action items, we're going to be approving the budget that was yesterday, the budget vote, and I just wanted to thank the public. We certainly appreciate the support that we got, we appreciate the yes vote. We can't thank people enough. I know this is a difficult time for a lot of people, and so we really appreciate passing the budget, and we're very grateful. Just wanted to say that as we, it's on our consent agenda. Right, can I have a motion on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following consent items?
Yes, I'm voting.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, consent agenda? Steve?
Yes.
All right, that passes. Motion on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept a donation of $279.05 from Ruby's Automotive Incorporated to be applied toward defraying the 2019-20 overdue lunch charges to the families of the financially challenged, free and reduced lunch students in the Rhinebeck Central School District.
So much.
So much second, sorry. Didn't register what Steve said.
Any discussion? Well, we obviously want to... Well, we obviously want to thank Ruby's for their generous donation to, to help with these charges. All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Uh, Joe, we're not having exec, right?
Uh, yes, that would be a good idea.
Yes, right. Uh, okay, can I have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of?
I think, I think we're, we're looking at, uh, the, the potential for litigation. That would be our reason.
The potential of litigation.
So motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, uh, we're now going to move into executive session. Thanks, everybody, for attending, and again, thank you for passing the budget.